You alright?
Good, thank you.
No complaints.
Nobody listened if I did.
Do a lot of hunting, not a lot of killing. Still fun to get out though. Not yet, I would try.
Is Phillip gonna be here too?
Uh, I don't know, Phillip could be a little bit late he said.
Kim, do you need plans? Or did you bring yours? Okay.
Does everyone need?
So, do you need plans or did you bring yours?
I brought one. Alright, I'll call this regular meeting of the Kingston Municipal Planning Commission order. Miss Maisy, please call and roll.
Member Gary Botkin, member Sammy Frog.
Here.
Member Jim Owens.
Here.
Vice Chairman Wade Levin.
Here.
Secretary Beau Pickle.
Here.
Member Phillip Martin, Chairman Tim Neal.
Present. Do you hear a motion to approve the minutes from October the twenty first?
So moved.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
See anyone seeing corrections or deletions to the minutes? No, then call and roll in the meetings please.
Sammy Frog.
Yes.
Jim Owens.
Yes.
Wade Levin.
Yes.
Beau Pickle.
Yes.
Phil, uh, uh, Tim Neal.
Aye. We go to reports, uh, I do not have anything that I can send to report, I refer that to City Manager and Member Martin's not here, so I'll go into the building official, City Manager.
Uh, just, not a lot, nothing really of, of specific, uh, interest to the committee, just gonna update you on a couple of projects. As, as you all know, we've been working for years now to try to redo the Boulevard in Lad Landing and that, uh, that project is almost done, we got held up for a couple of weeks with a sinkhole problem, uh, we've got that resolved, so that one will be, uh, we'll be wrapping up in the next couple of weeks and also, if you remember, we had, uh, talked to you, uh, a year or more ago about the Lad Park project and, and trying to redo that park and expand it. Ended up coming in way over budget, so we had to back up and punt, we're now looking at a phased approach and working on that to, uh, slightly relocate and improve the, uh, the pavilion, put that park on sewer, uh, do some other things, so just a, a couple of projects I know I've talked to you about in the past that have kinda been on hiatus and starting to move again, so other than that, that's really all I have.
Thank you, anything with the Bondi Committee or the Historic Zoning Commission?
Nope.
Okay, and we did not have a BZA meeting this month, so, is anyone from the public here wish to address the Planning Commission? Alright, seeing none, we'll go into, uh, number one in new business, site plan approval. AJ Kanzel's owner property off Brentwood Way identified as map fifty-eight G parcels, Group C parcel nine is on C four controlled commercial district, is requesting a site plan approval to build condos. So, has everyone had a chance to look at the, Lawson, if we have any questions?
Good evening all. We've been looking at we've been looking at a, a site here at the, uh, Brentwood and, uh, we were Bradford Way and we were looking to do a condo type development, but we're having a little issues with, uh, banking, so we're, we're trying to figure out if we may be able to do some smaller lot in the C four. Um, so I've brought you guys a plan that is a site plan approval, but I don't show lot lines. So this one may be a, a hard push for you guys to understand, but we're thinking maybe in the, uh, C four that we may be able to ask for a small lot size, uh, I don't know, being twenty foot wide.
A little, little background, this is, we have two parcels left in Brentwood, it's about a hundred acres. Uh, started at nineteen eighty-six, built, uh, I don't know, the library was in the nineties, uh, all the buildings there primarily were built in the nineties and, so we have this parcel that sits between the enrichment, federal credit union and assisted living, we own the parcel across the street that houses the ninth judicial district office building that we leased to the state. And so that's the only parcel on Bradford Way that's left and, as AJ said about condos, since two thousand and eight during the big financial crisis, if, if, if you know Brentwood, there's condos behind it and to, uh, basically south side of it, there's condos that have their own little associations, but now with banking, you, you, uh, you have to have at least twenty-five to forty percent of the condos pre-sold as opposed to an individual lot. When we developed Brentwood, individual lots had to be sixty feet, now this, this lot eight is sixty feet point oh one, so and a, a long Bradford Way there and then the rest of it is the right of way that serves this lot, the ninth judicial district and the assisted living. And it's sort of like a private street as far as everything but sixty feet of it is private street. So, the, the thought was, the C four district has been amended since nineteen eighty-six and it allows twenty foot lots. What AJ's wanting to build are one level, single car garage townhouses that are, uh, roughly what, twenty-eight, thirty feet wide?
Thirty.
So the idea is it'd be just like the site plan, but it would be basically individual lots as opposed to a condo being on one lot. So, we didn't know if that's a possibility, it can be condo, but it just makes it a lot more, uh, difficult for people buying them and for the development of condos or not, that's why we've been talking about using plan unit development where you have individual fee simple properties as opposed to owning part of a big property.
Do you have a, do you have a site plan that shows the individual lots as opposed to one?
No, well, we, it's kinda like
No, we're, we're just saying is that possible? Uh, you know, uh, if it gets approved as lot eight, as a condo regime, we will follow that drainage and then maybe come back to you with individual lots as a as a, since it'd only be five lots, I guess it could qualify for a final plat review and a final, so that's a question mark.
And we decided it couldn't be PUD because it didn't have enough acreage.
Yeah, the acreage is what
Well, I mean, Brentwood is sort of a PUD, that whole down park is sort of a PUD, but it was never, you know, up until you amended the C four, you weren't allowed to have a PUD in a C four, even though a C four is sort of conceptually like a PUD, so but now you are allowed with planning commission approval to have a PUD, so the PUDs are in the zoning book are R twos and something else.
So Matt, what do you, what exactly are you asking for tonight?
Uh, I, what we'd be asking for now, tonight, is site plan approval on lot eight to do, do five condos and, and drain the site. If it became a final plat with individual lots, it'd still look just like this, it'd just have lots. We just, we're asking the question be- before we go to a surveyor and, you know, we get the foundation plan, exactly where it needs to be and create the lot lines, is that something we could do, uh, is have individual lots? So, but to ask tonight is just to get site plan approval to build five condos on lot eight.
Okay. Okay, well, I have some questions, but do we need to have a, a, a motion first, or do we need to?
Yeah, we probably need to have a motion to go ahead and prove this in a second.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve this, um, I have several questions.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second my bill, go ahead, Mr. Levin.
Okay, so, uh, it's on, zone C four and you're, you're, you have zero, zero lot line setbacks, correct?
Uh, on the front, on, zero on side setbacks, zero on rear setbacks and twenty-five foot on front setbacks.
Right, so, so on the side, so technically you're, 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 um, what you're asking if it's not a condominium is that if you built it so it looked like a condominium, but it's not under a condominium regime and your property lines are just gonna blow down the party walls.
That's right.
And, and, um, so it's zoned like you can do that.
That's right.
Um, and so you can butt these right up against each other.
Right, and the zoning has been amended to allow down to a twenty foot lot, these would be about twenty-eight foot lots.
And so, so that would be the, the biggest issue is that, that the, the road frontage on these lots is gonna be down to?
But it would remain a private, we're not asking that it be a public street, it'd still be
Okay, well, well, that was my other question that I had was that, um, this property, from what I've seen, isn't configured as its own lot. Has it been, has it been platted as its own lot?
That, that would, that would be part of our, our, our final is, there is a section that goes down to highway fifty-eight and then there's a section in the rear that provides easements for other lots utilities, it would be this, this property as drawn.
Right, and because that, that's what I saw, you had a, you had a remnant off, off on the, the west and you had the street going, going on the north and, and as part of the private road.
Yeah.
Yes, that's what I saw on there.
We would want to dedicate that to the city because that serves the library, ninth judicial district, enrichment, federal credit union, et cetera.
Are the rest of those city streets?
It's a city street and I don't, if you look at the recorded plat, it actually goes all the way down, I don't know why the tax assessor didn't really pick it up this way, but
You're paying taxes on it.
I've been paying taxes on it for thirty something years.
Well, cause that was, that was my question is, are you gonna replat this lot to, to?
With the five lots, we would leave that, we would refer to the existing, uh, recorded plat that's dedicated and on record since, I guess, eighty-eight.
Okay, so, we dealt with setbacks, um, and you're asking for a site plan on this, that it's got some site plan issues for drainage and that sort of thing that it's lacking and I, I guess you're just asking for preliminary approval?
Can be, whatever y'all feel comfortable with.
Because you, you're gonna need a little bit more on here before you can do?
There was a digital, uh, amendment sent to this that showed the drainage, I don't know if that got, uh,
I, I see a couple of grass swales, but that's it.
Yeah, there, there's actually a drainage pipe in the rear and one at the front corner next to enrichment, credit union that can be tied into as far as existing, uh, catch basin systems and then of course, it drains across to what used, is the city property, which is a, a big reservoir where the sewer plant set, set as part of and then of course, it goes into the Watts Bar Lake.
Mr. Belling.
Uh, Matt. Correct me if I'm wrong, the city street stops there where it cuts back down to go back down to fifty-eight or you, did you say, I hear you right, you would want the city to take the road all the way out to the, to the nurse, I'm talking about going out toward the nursing home.
Oh, no, 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 the sixty, there's sixty feet that comes along, that ends at the, we were required to have sixty foot for lot eight.
Yeah.
And, and so that, that would remain, uh, from, from the end of that section to the assisted living, ninth eighty-eight, that would remain a private right of way. It'd be just the section and I do think that if we look at the recorded plat, it already goes down to the highway. But for whatever reason, the property assessor's always kept it there and
Yeah, no, I just, I just misunderstood you, I thought you were gonna, wanting us to take the whole section of the road all the way to the nursing homes, okay.
No, we're good there, serves our office building, assisted living and these, what would be eventually five lots.
Okay, thank you. Do you have anything else?
What, um, so do we need to revise that to say it's, it's a preliminary site plan and he's gonna bring in another one to, to review after we figure out what?
We'd like to get the site, if, if the five lots is possible, we'd like to get to the point of saying what we would need for that and resolve it all.
My question goes back to the, this twenty-eight foot lot business, have we ever approved anything that narrow that wasn't in a PUD? I know we approved some stuff in Lad Landing, little special, little homes, but, and that was, but that was it, that was in a PUD.
Request in C four since you dropped it from sixty to, to twenty, because the idea was building some townhouses in the future with smaller lots.
Where are you, where are you, where are you getting that in the zoning thing?
See, our subdivision regs still require sixty feet, there, there's no provision for less than sixty feet.
When David, David Williams was serving as your state planner, that, that, uh, you adjusted it, you did two things, you adjusted where you could have a four-story building in C four and you could have a twenty foot like townhouse, bound to a twenty foot townhouse lot. But it was an amendment that was probably done in two thousand and gosh. It, 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 it would've been, you know, Dave, whenever David passed away, it was about a year before that or a year and a half.
But it's in the zoning code, not the subdivision regs.
It's in the zoning code. I, I do believe, yeah. There were, there were, there were three adjustments that you could do a PUD with plant, not with planning commission approval. You could go to a twenty foot lot, we adjusted the setback from thirty-five to twenty-five, I think, and, uh, the back setback lines and side backs, setback lines remain the same.
I see where the front setback can be twenty-five, no side yard setback, no rear setback.
Right.
But I don't see anything about the twenty foot lot.
Yeah, I just don't recall anything about that outside of a PUD.
Uh, I'm looking through, Kelly's gonna get the hard copy, I think I have the latest version here I'm looking to, but mine's the twenty twenty-two, it's community version on here, so I, I would assume it would be.
Oh yeah, well, I'll give us change today.
All, all three, it's just there's a se- there's a reference in the spacing between the buildings, the reference is twenty feet, which was amended in two thousand seventeen. So it's about right.
Right.
That's the space between the buildings, not, not the lot.
Yeah, with that in mind, there was, that was, there was a couple of different ordinances that were done at that same time in April seventeen and I would assume that it was, that would've been when it would've been done. Here the front yard setback, the space between buildings. Those are the only amendments that I'm showing recently in that section. Before then, it goes back to two thousand two, so. And there was some, there was something in add, well, there used to be, there's something that was deleted, uh, at that same time by that amendment, but I don't know what that one.
The section where it talks about the minimum width of sixty feet, is that, is, is there an amendment there?
For if we guess we're just gonna keep that here?
Uh, I'm not yet, but I may be overlooking it.
So I remember the twenty foot setback between, uh, the buildings, it's like if you had a group of buildings, a four, fourplex or sixplex and it was on a lot, then you'd have to have a twenty foot.
That's what I remember, but I don't remember ever approving to have twenty foot wide lots.
I, I was, I was pretty confident.
Cause the subdivision regs still call for sixty minimum period and that's never been changed.
That's, that's when it would've been seventeen.
Really, it sounds like we're not ready for any of this right now, till we get this figured out.
Is it possible Brentwood be classified as a PUD, the whole, the whole section down there where the assisted living is and the could it fall within that, I may, I may be confused on the twenty foot, a PUD lot, we, I know they allow PUDs in the C four and maybe that's how David was covering that.
Right, yeah, we, we do allow PUDs in C four, of course, you, you've done some of those and, and
Be possible to do these units, but you can't have PUD if it's not more, if it's not
Right.
But, the whole section of Bradford Way is sort of like a PUD, I mean, we've tied it into, we've tied it into Lakewood Village, tying back from, you know, we left the strip along the library, all the way back over, passing that judicial district back over to the, uh, not only the assisted living, but the, uh, apartments over there that go back over to the Like I say, units are just harder, condo units are just harder to finance now, just for anybody.
I think we'd have to do more research to figure out if that, if what you're talking about could qualify a- as a PUD, I mean, that's I'd, I'd have to revisit a lot of that and Well, I'm waiting to see if I find anything.
Maybe it was seventeen, eighty?
Yeah, there was also, there was also an amendment that in eighteen apparently, that I'm seeing reference to. Uh, they shouldn't, no freestanding buildings should be closer than twenty feet from any other buildings on the side of the PUD, you see that?
All other buildings shall be closer than twenty foot, what does that?
I see we're gonna do two, three buildings, freestanding, like a duplex and a duplex.
I mean, truthfully, the, like, the road frontage, I mean, that's, that's not dictated by the zoning code, that's, that's strictly a subdivision reg thing.
Right, in C, well, in C four, but
In anything.
Yeah. Alright, so, what have we figured anything out?
I can't see in the new zoning ordinance where there's a lot size stipulation on it, as long as they can meet their setbacks. For a PUD, you took out that it can't be in C four, so it can be in C four now. Um, so I don't see any evidence why it can't be in a PUD, put in a PUD.
But it qualifies as a PUD.
Would it qualify?
Yeah, is it big enough, is it?
There's no minimum lot size for a PUD anymore. I can't find anything in the new
Ricky, you, you looked at section eleven, six oh seven, I'm looking through it now, but more eyes maybe better, I'm on small watch. The truth is, the PUD gives us flexibility in areas that we otherwise simply wouldn't have it.
Right.
And, and without a PUD, I don't I don't see any way that that could
Well, it doesn't look like we can get anything resolved tonight, it looks like it needs to be some more stuff done before we can get resolved.
We'd like to go over the site drainage issues though and make sure on, on the next sort of visit we'll get that done.
Okay. The Miss Maisy, you agree with me on that? We need to do some more research before we do anything else on this? Okay, Mr. Levin, I need you to withdraw your motion.
I will withdraw my motion.
And Mr. Pickle, withdraw your second, please.
I withdraw the second.
Sounds like we got a little work to do to get this one correct.
So, but, but on the site drainage, what, what, what do you, what would you like to make sure we get resolved on the next one?
What, we'd have to just be within compliance on a standard, uh, site drainage in the C four. And you, you treat, you treat a PUD or a, or a condo unit similar to a commercial building, not all like different. So, if it, if it qualifies, you need intervention, if it doesn't, yeah, we're doing
Alright, sorry, we're good.
We're tableing it?
We're, yeah, we're, we'll, we'll get it fixed up.
I'm asking the table.
Do you need a smack? Okay. Okay. Thank you, Matt, appreciate it. Item two, discussion upon amending the vesting rights to comply with an updated state law. Do you hear a motion for this? Are we just discussing it or are we voting on this tonight, Ruth? On the number two, this says discussion on amending to, to vesting rights, are we voting on this tonight or are we just discussing it?
So, we're just discussing, um, to bring it back to the December and we'll put the vesting rights and the certificates on the agenda in December, correct?
Okay, alright, does anybody have any questions on the vesting rights?
I mean, we're just making it match the state, right?
That's right.
I don't think there's anything
Word for word lifted from the state law.
Yes. Yeah, let us, so all we did was take
All we did was take what you currently have written and we changed, um, I say we, I Um, I changed where the beginning, the beginning of the vesting period is when it's submitted to the planning office instead of when it's approved by the planning commission, so that wording was changed in each of the phases in, in the, in initial and the additional, and then the phased vesting.
And that's what brings it compliant with the new state regulations? Okay. Anything else on that one? Uh, the item's discussion on amending the required certified for plats, I know we talked about this, was it last month or? Last month, yeah.
Yeah, um, so we fixed what we told you all that we were gonna fix, Glenn added the TCA references before he retired. Um, that's pretty much it.
Okay. I have questions.
Yes.
Uh, or not, not just questions, they're comments, um, so on the plat certification forms, um, at the the last sentence in the cer- certification says no lot or lots shown here on shall get, again, be resub divided without resubmission and approval by the city planning commission. That's by default, that's a, a law anyway, it's not necessary to be in there.
Okay.
Um, cause that's, that's already law, that's already our regulations, we don't need to add that again somewhere. And then right underneath that, it said witness by our hand, that's a remnant of the notary that was removed.
Okay.
And we need to add the date to the owner's signature out past it.
So we're taking off no lots, that whole sentence, and then the witness and adding date.
And the, the same thing on the certificate of ownership, dedication, private streets. And the certificate of utility approval, um, the second line down, we need to add the N on shown for a show. The second line down, we need to add the N on shown for a show. And what we have on here is that the surety has been provided to the Kingston Municipal Planning Commission. Was that what was understood, is, is the, is the city gonna hold the surety? On these utilities?
What's in your subdivision regulations already?
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that's. A burden the city's wanting to. Instead of the utility provider, is that correct?
That would be up to you all.
And we typically do bonding on, like, roads and sewer, I don't know, have we ever done bonding on electrical?
That, that's why I was, I, I was saying that the surety has been provided to, and instead of just. To the utility provider themselves, I'm, I'm not sure how. That needs to be presented, but, cause, cause you're, you're have, holding the surety on an electric line or, or a water line.
Right.
And that's probably not something that you wanna cross over into.
No, no, no electricity, no.
Yeah, and, and so it might needs to, need to say that it's been secured. And proven, or whatever, something like that.
So just, a surety has been provided to ensure completion, just don't put the certificate holder in there? Is that what you're saying?
That, that's what I would say, I'm, I'm not sure if that's. What everybody else wants to do, but that, that, to me, that's, the, the, the city shouldn't hold that.
I mean, I think it's our job to make sure that it's done.
Yeah.
But.
Just an assurance of the surety.
Right. Right, and we have to protect the city, but, yeah.
Right. So you, you're saying that an assurance, that a surety has been secured.
So everybody's good with just taking out Kingston Municipal Planning Commission? And it reading has been provided to ensure completion in the case of default by the developer?
Yes.
Yeah.
And you still want them to sign off what kind of surety it is and all the things on the plat, correct?
Sure.
Yes.
Cause it's, if it's already been done, then they perhaps should have no problem with adding that information to it. Okay, number four, there's a certificate of accuracy. Uh, again, the removal of the witness, my hand and seal. And on the certificate of accuracy, it goes on a survey. So you're gonna have the name of the surveyor in three different locations already. And the RLS number, so adding it to another certificate that somebody has to fill something else out. It's already redundant thing is not necessary.
We don't need it.
Yeah. So the certificate of ac- of accuracy has to go next to the stamp anyway. That's all I had.
Okay.
Does anybody have anything else? Alright, so we'll get that fixed and passed in December. For discussion on the project specific workforce housing, it's just something we'd talked about with, uh. The, uh, transit workers coming in, um, has anybody got any questions about it? I've got a couple, but go ahead, anybody else says?
I think there's a typo on the first page. That, section three, paragraph two. Uh, renewals, maybe annually, maybe, I think there's a word missing in there, maybe extended annually?
Extended or reapproved, or something of that nature needs to be there.
There's, there's a word missing there.
Well. We have an extension on the, on the next page that.
Well, and on that, yeah, I think it, something needs to be there, you see it, Brooke? Okay, and the, what's in parentheses? Uh, I, I would like that to be struck. Because not all projects are gonna be state or federally funded.
Gotta love AI, right?
Hmm?
Gotta love AI, right? I think that maybe, that you're talking about, Jim, is supposed to be two words, renewals may be annually. For the duration of the qualifying project.
Maybe what?
Maybe, like, they may be annually, you may do them annually. Not like maybe, like maybe.
It still needs a verb.
Yeah.
Shall be.
Shall be.
Not maybe.
Right, annual?
Maybe valid, no, maybe, wait a minute.
You gotta have a verb to have an adverb.
You gotta work on that.
Yeah, there's not many verbs in that sentence.
I looked through everything else and didn't see a whole lot, um, else with it unless, unless one of you guys did.
And four, the math doesn't work, like, at all. The, the density is no more than fifteen RV spaces per acre, and then we have that, they have to be twenty feet apart. And fifty feet from the public right of way and twenty-five feet from the property line, that math doesn't work. I mean, i- if, if you put in those set, twenty-five feet off the side setbacks and fifty feet from the front. You're gonna fit about six in there, total, and, and to be able to have them twenty feet apart. It's just not gonna work. So i- i- as far as density, I, I would say no more than eight spaces per acre. Cause anybody that brings something in is gonna, i- if they're twenty feet apart, they're gonna have to back into it. They have to be in an angle, you have two hundred and eight feet to work with, and you're not gonna be able to. Get into that site unless you're at an angle, especially with the longer RV. So, I would reduce the density, and that's. That's just my opinion, but.
Wouldn't you just bump up into the first restriction that you get to?
Yeah.
I mean, wouldn't it depend on the shape of the lot?
It would.
Yeah, I think it's, yeah.
It would, but, I mean, but we're, we're, we're basing this on a minimum parcel size of two acres. And, and so.
What if it's, yeah.
So we don't really know, um.
Right, but if it was long and skinny or something, you might be able to get. Fifteen in there, right?
Maybe, if they're twenty feet apart and, if you use, if it's long and skinny, you still have to be.
Deep, I mean.
Right, you still have to be twenty-five feet off the side property lines, so you're reducing that by fifty feet already.
Before you all vote on this, um.
No, we're not gonna vote tonight, it's not ready to.
I know, but before we even put it on the agenda as an item to be voted on. Would you like me to invite the new building official? He has some thoughts about this, that's a different side of the negatives that can come from it.
Yeah, I mean, that's not a problem at all.
I just thought it might be helpful to hear both sides of it, things maybe that we're not thinking about.
Yeah, and the, the number five on the screening, it says buffering and screening shall be required. If we're gonna require something, we're gonna have to say what type of screening or buffering, what that means.
When we did our RV ordinance for the county, um, we have a definition for buffering. That Greg Lefieux approved, that we can, I can let y'all see, so you can see if you like that definition.
I, I think that's. Important if you're gonna require something, that it, it's either vegetative or privacy fence or something. The. Section five, number five. Last sentence. I think that the typo in there should be before. That's pre right now. And that's all I saw.
Okay, um. Yeah, we can, we, we can revisit this and, and bring in the building official, talk more about it. Other than those few things, I didn't have anything major to.
I, I got one more thing on this, if I may add. An opportunity for clarification, section nine, uh, sentence two. Uh, I'm sorry, the, uh. Yeah, well, the whole section. If a owner is gonna spend a significant amount of money to make an improvement. For instance, putting in a, uh, fire hydrant or underground sewer or something like that, that's gonna be a, a fairly. Uh, substantial investment. It seems like there ought to be a way for us to kinda pre-approve that certain types of improvements can stay. At the, at the, at the moment of closure. Uh, rather than waiting to the whim of, of. The city, uh, to do this, uh, after the fact.
So what are you, what are you thinking?
Well, you know, I think maybe underground electricity and underground sewer should be like pre-approved, that it can stay as a permanent improvement to the property. Uh, that will not have to be repeat, uh, uh, removed, or will not have to be in danger of needing to be removed.
So, so if the use is removed, uh, at the end of their permit period. Then the use is not there anymore, so the, the infrastructure's not able to be used until that use is granted again.
Right.
Um, it's underground, and it's not a, um. Like you said, it's, it's an improvement for potential future use. Like, if, if they decided at some point they were, at that point, they wanted to turn it into a, a permanent RV park. That follows our, all of our guidelines, and that infrastructure would need to be there to do that. And so the, the timing may not work out, but also. As, as Mr. Owen said, that, that, that infrastructure is also an asset to a piece of property. So, which is. Which is better, if the use is gone, then does the infrastructure need to be?
I don't definitely think so, I mean.
Yeah, I, I don't think so either, it's, it's. The infrastructure's underground, it's not, I, I, I think the intent of this is to remove the things that make everything look ugly.
Right.
And, and, and if that intent isn't, I mean.
So let's, and, and I kinda.
Utilities aren't.
I kinda get where you're going, because we're talking about it to put it back to its original condition.
Yeah.
So let's say someone had four acres. And they went through this and they put gravel down and they did everything well, after all, this was over with and their permits done. They might want to say, okay, I'm gonna use this as, and rent it out for storage, for RV boat storage.
Right.
Or, or use it personally.
Right, so, I mean, it wouldn't matter whether it's stuff's underground or not, I, do you agree, Mr. Mullin?
I mean, they'd be well within their rights to put it in for their own use.
Right.
So, there's no, there's no downside to them having it. But I agree, it's, it's more of a aesthetics thing that we're.
Right, that was the, the intent of what we're looking at here.
Well, it says, or another approved post-use condition. So would, would this commission decide what the other post-use condition would be?
It would be decided by permitting, right? Your zoning ordinance.
Probably.
Well, it does say the city holds the right to determine what infrastructure shall be removed. So, that alone gives us discretion to not require them to dig everything up if we don't want to.
Right.
And if it's, if it's a commercial business that they're gonna put, try to put back in there, they're gonna have to come back here for site plan approval anyway, so.
Yeah, I think we're just kind of a timing issue here, you know, if, 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 if someone doesn't wanna do. RV parking anymore, it takes them five years to get to act together to use it for something else, you know, or. I think it would be better to, to know what is gonna be left up front rather than waiting to the end.
I think the main thing, the main intent with it was just get all the RVs off within thirty days.
Right, you know, says.
And, and, you know, all the poles, if it's ver- vertical stuff, all the, all the above-ground utilities. I think, I think, I think you can probably. Steer the requirements to above-ground improvements, maybe.
Yeah, I mean, and it says all RV supporting infrastructure and temporary facilities shall be removed in thirty days. So you had a hood out there for something, or. I, I can see that, but as far as digging everything up in the time of matter, if you don't have to, you don't have to.
Right, well, but you're, we're saying, well, you heard my point.
Yeah.
I'd like for you to think about it and, and consider changing that just a little bit.
So, do you guys want this revision back on the December?
Yes, that's fine, if you wanna bring the building official with us to discuss it more, that'd be fine, too. Alright, do we have anything else to discuss tonight?